2016, my name is Mike Higgins, Chairman. On my left, the Vice Chairman, Mr. Vares, board members Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Hemel, Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Frankel, the Head of Inspektional Services, Mr. Dugger and the Rhea, and our clerk, Mr. Murphy. If you have a cellphone or a pager, could you please put on silent or vibrate not to interrupt the meeting? If anyone wants to speak, please step outside if you want to talk. If anyone's going to testify tonight, could you please stand up and raise your right hand and take an oath.
(inaudible)
Just to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth that helped you down. Under all business, EY Realty LLC for a variance from existing townhome, construction in 12th Unit Residential, 10416 Interville Street. The applicant is the applicant here.
Good evening, gentlemen. Attorney Henry Levin representing the applicant. When we were here two weeks ago, the board had a concern about additional parking for visitors. We have submitted a new plan showing two additional parking spaces. There's 20 feet on each side, and what we've done, if you look, we've added two more spaces. To the requirement with seven spaces, we now have 10.
Any questions in the board?
I have none.
The only thing we talked about was payment, not to be paid.
That's correct. It's going to be gravel.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any comments?
No comments.
I mean, that's what I was looking for. Someone can go right in and give it up. Can't say you're not going to have guests, you are, so. Satisfied, I don't know.
I'm satisfied with that, too.
Yeah, likewise.
I'll get to saying that.
But well.
Chairman, what do you think?
This is the chairman, man of the Z-17-35 EJY Realty LLC for a variance of the existing two bedroom home, constructed in 4D residential complex on the premises number 10416 Interville Street, Quincy, and make motion to grant the variance.
Second. Motion. See an enour in favor?
Aye.
Close. Come on. Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Yes, I have some stuff we've got to move to. Let's start off in the back. Case number C-1750 308 C Street. I have a letter here that would draw a red flag. Do you have a motion, please?
This is the chairman, man of the Z-17-50, EJY, for a variance pertaining to subdivision existing lot, two lots, constructed, two family, new trade lot, premises number 308 C Street, make a motion to withdraw the credit.
Second.
Second.
On the motion, see an enour in favor?
Aye.
Close. Come on. Case number Z-1749, I have a letter to continue this to July 11. That's 90 Interville Street.
The chairman, man of the Z-1749, Dan Layford, a variance is subdivision of existing lot, constructed, new two bedroom, and a newly created lot on the premises number 90 Interville Street, Quincy, make motion to continue the hearing until July 11.
Second.
Second.
On the motion, see an enour in favor?
Aye.
Close. Come on. C-1748, 126 Interville Street, I have a letter here to move that to July 11.
This is the chairman, man of the Z-17-48, phone code for a variance, constructed two bedroom home, vacant lot, premises number 126 Interville Street, make a motion to continue the hearing until July 17.
Second. July 11.
I'm sorry, Levin, excuse me. Selective.
Second.
Second.
On the motion, see an enour in favor?
Aye.
Close. Come on.
Do people speak up on these or?
One, one, one second.
They can't hear you, so.
All right, one second. We're going to go through this again. Case number Z-1745, I have a letter here to move it to June 27.
This is the chairman, man of the Z-17-45, Hope Code Realty LLC, for clarification, modification, on the definition of ZVA case number 12-022, business professional with general offices, to include and add counseling professionals on the premises number 36 Miller Style Road in Quincy, I make a motion to extend it hearing until June 27.
Second. On the motion, see an enour in favor?
Aye.
Close. Come on. If you're here for Miller Street.
Mill style.
I'm sorry, Mill style, Miller style. That's going to be June 27. If you're here for 126 Interville Street, that's July 11. 90 Interville Street, July 11. Property in Hausneck, 3 Adams, 308 C Street, been withdrawn. They're not going to have a hearing. So if anyone's here for that, those are the decks. Right under all business, case number Z-1738. Just for the record, yesterday, plans were submitted, we're cutting down the floor. I haven't even seen them. We haven't seen them. We just got them tonight. You want to go through the hearing? Like to wait two weeks before we make a decision, but if you want to continue, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for the opportunity to present these tonight. For the record, my name's Dan Bailey. I'm the attorney for the applicant, One Place LLC. As the chairman mentioned, we have revised plans. When we were here a month ago, we heard comments regarding height, parking, and traffic predominantly. We've met with the architect and the planning team, and we have revised plans that take basically the top floor off the building, reducing the total number of units from 40 to 32, and increasing the total number of parking spaces from 32 to 40, 40 parking spaces. We've also conducted an updated traffic study, and a traffic engineer is here to present that. But before we get into the new plans on the traffic study, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. The first is to remind the board, which knows, but also, you know, other people that are interested in this, that this project was approved by this board, a 40-unit project was approved by this board a year and a half ago, and that the project now before you, the only difference we have now is we've got four three-bedroom units, and we've got six more affordable housing units. So we've gone from four affordable housing units to 10 affordable housing units. Other than the direct abutters a year and a half ago, the only people that were really here objecting, there really weren't any other people here objecting, and now we're drawing a lot more objections, which honestly doesn't surprise me because it's a comprehensive permit. But I think it's important to get on the record that the only real difference here is that there are six more affordable housing units. The other thing I want to emphasize is that this is in the IB zoning district, the industrial B zoning district, which is the least restrictive district in the city of Quincy. It allows up to eight stories by right, where at half of that. It also allows open storage of construction materials, hotels, restaurants, office buildings. You know, now, that's, that's only two-thirds of the site, honestly. Two-thirds is industrial, one-third is residential. But the proposed use, and I understand people are uncomfortable with change, but the proposed residential use is far less impactful on this neighborhood than an eight-story self-storage warehouse, or a contractor's yard, or any of the other uses that can be made in the industrial B zoning district. So with that, you know, I'll, I'll stop my pontificating, and I'll turn it over to the, to the Dave Mancella, who's a private architect, to over the changes to the plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
(inaudible) 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 When we were last here two weeks ago, a month ago, we were asked to consider taking down the number of units from the 38 that was proposed to 32, and basically that removed an entire floor off of what is, would be a four-story building. What you see here in the image is basically a three-story building, and we have two two-bedroom up top, which gets us to the number 32, and we've added some outdoor space, activity space, a community room for the tenants. We also were asked at that time to come back with, if possible, more parking. Were able to get parking up to 40 spaces. There are approximately five spaces here, seven here, and 27 underneath the building, and one up in the front here. And those are primarily, primarily the changes that we made to this design, based on the comments we had heard in the previous. And, yes, I don't know if I want to review the project again in full. I'm happy to do that.
No, I think everyone here knows, knows what it is and what we were talking about. Dense. So with that, is there any questions with board?
I don't know at this time.
Any questions?
(inaudible)
No, no.
Not going to come.
Is that your proposal, that they're? Yeah, okay. If anyone wants to speak on this, I'm going to go through it again because the project has changed. So I'm going to take those comments, and we're going to postpone this hearing for two weeks because we just got these plans. The council didn't even get these plans. They weren't even sent out to the other people that should have had these plans, so in fairness to them, I want them to wait in too. People that should have got these plans. They supposedly, they were emailed yesterday. I don't know, I didn't, I didn't see it, but probably in my phone somewhere, but I'll get to that. Would like to have it two weeks in advance. So with that, do you have a comment, counsel?
Yeah, we did submit a traffic study last week, and we did have an opportunity to just present the highlights.
Sure, that would be good. Yeah. Counsel, please.
Thank you.
Hey.
So I just want to thank the board. My name, for the record, is Kirsten Hughes, I'm at 116 Willow Ave. And I did not get a chance to see these new plans. However, I look forward to taking a look. As I stated in a letter to, to the board last week, I have concerns about this project, the density, the traffic, and, and the impact to the neighborhood. So certainly a neighborhood that, that cares, as you can see greatly about the impact here that, that this will have. And so I think it's imperative that we move forward in a responsible way on this project. I look forward to taking a look at the revisions in this plan, and if, if the board sees fit to going ahead with this project, to coming up with some mitigating factors, and also any type of mitigation or relief for the neighborhood. But I'm going to reserve judgment until I take a look at the new provisions. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and thanks for your work.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. And I want to thank the residents, Torquay, this evening, from the neighborhood, for showing the seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
(inaudible) 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 Traffic engineer with Gillan Associates out of Wayne. We did do a traffic study two years ago, and we also updated that traffic study, and I just want to present the highlights. I know you've got a full meeting here, you've got a lot of people that want to speak, but I just wanted to give you the, the highlights of what I, what I found. We did put a machine down on both Oak Colony and Warren two years ago, when we found that the traffic volumes were 1,200 vehicles on Oak Colony, and that they were 420 on Warren. Now, the reason you do the machines is to make sure you capture your peak hours when you go and capture 7 to 9, 4 to 6, to make sure you have your peak hours, that there isn't something occurring off peak that we should be designing for. So we had done that. We knew we had peak hours back out of 7, 9, 4, 6, and that's what we did again. We counted all of those intersections over again, and the intersection of Standish Avenue at Warren, the intersection of Warren at Newton, and the intersection of Warren at Oak Colony Avenue. We count the 7 to 9 and 4 to 6, and the four high consecutive 15-minute periods becomes your peak hour that you look at for evaluation. The morning peak hour occurred from 7:45 to 8:45, and the evening peak hour occurred from 5 until 6. We looked at the trips that would be generated by the 40 unit, and, and I guess by the 32, we also were asked to take a look at that, too, which you have in that report. The 40 unit would be 23 trips in the morning peak hour. You know what? Let me talk about the volume real quickly because I have those up here. Oak Colony does have about 102 going towards Saint, towards the middle school in the morning peak hour, with 92 going away. Standish Avenue has about 200 headed towards Oak Colony in the morning, and about 100 going away. And the volumes are very low in the middle with Warren carrying about 40 cars, and Newton really not carrying all that much.
Is that per hour, or is that?
That's during the peak hour, the peak hour that you look for at for design. And during the evening peak hour, there were 112 cars heading away from Hancock Street towards Oak Colony, and 173 coming back the other way from Wallaston towards Hancock Street. That surprised me that on Oak Colony actually had over 150 vehicles in the evening peak hour coming off of Wallaston headed towards Saint Anne's Road. Evidently, there are people who are leaving the Wallaston T-Station out of Boston and all of that, that have decided that it's easier to cut down Oak Colony and take the left of Saint Anne, and then get the traffic light there and avoid all that confusion. I didn't realize that was a cut road, but I, looking at these numbers, obviously it is. Now, the numbers aren't high, but they are high compared to what else is going on in the neighborhood, the lower ones. And going away from Hancock and Saint Anne, it's only about 40 vehicles doing that. So those are the counts that we did visually, no, these are the counts that we just did last month, and they compared quite favorably to those that we had done two years ago. I want to be sure that, that we had, that nothing had changed, so let's move to my plan after we count them over again, to make sure that, you know, there wasn't any new development that was thrown around that would have been from there. (inaudible) 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 Look up to the Institute of Transportation Engineer's Quick Generation Manual, and both the, the 40 unit scenario as well as the new 32-unit scenario. Under the 40 unit scenario, we generate 23 peak hour trips in the morning peak hour, with three coming inbound to the site, and 18 going outbound. In the afternoon peak hour, there would be 36 coming inbound and 14 leaving the site for a total of 40. The 32 unit really wasn't all that much different. There was like four coming in in the morning peak hour, with 16 going out for a total of 20 during the morning peak hour, and the afternoon, big 23 coming in, 12 going out for a total of 35, and the afternoon peak hour. This is based on, based on the Institute of Transportation Engineer's Quick Generation Manual for the apartments, and during the weekday, the 32 unit would generate roughly 213 trips over the 24 routes. Then, we did the highway capacity calculation to look at what the quantitative level of service, which could, would be, levels of service are a measure of how the traffic is operating. It does, and we get a great letter grade, and the letter grade is runs from A for like no delay or free flow through F at a failed condition. We use the latest capacity software, Syncro, and it all gave us the level of service. And you can see that Oak Colony at Warren, looking at the existing, it's A in the morning, and Warren has a B, and everything has an A in the afternoon. Under the base condition with the inflated volumes without the project, it'd be, it has the same thing with Warren at a B level and everything else at an A. And then the, and then under the projected scenarios of 2022, with both the 40 and the 32 unit scenarios, again, Warren still has that B level of service and everything else operating at an A. Down at the Standish and Warren, which has the three-way stop sign control, all of those movements are operating at an A level of service during the existing baseline and build conditions. And the same thing at Warren at Newton. You'll have an A level, there is an A level of service on all movements during the morning and evening peak hour. It stays the same under the base conditions, and it stays the same under both scenarios for the building of P and P hour. There was one crash at the Warren-Oak Colony intersection, and that is not high for, uniquely hazardous for the three-year period. The design speed was 33 miles an hour on Oak Colony. We need about 226 feet of site distance. We have over the 230. It might be that we might have to prohibit a parking with every one carlet coming out in the driveway for access on the Oak Colony, just to make sure that we can see further in, in, in that actually problem. That's, in, in the nutshell, obviously, I'll be here to answer any questions you may have, but that's the updated traffic study.
Yes, any questions?
Yeah. Jack, on this one here, on Oak Colony.
Yep.
Past Warren, the peak hours in there, are they, they related to the school or the rush hour?
Both. If you give me three seconds here, and the...
I mean, it seems to me that there might be two peak hours, right?
Well, not really. During, I'm going to hold this up over here. This is the, this is the, this is Oak Colony. You can see how it spikes in the morning peak hour. Look, that's showing a combination, bolt to school. The peak hour in the morning is pretty much 7:45 to 8:45, now we're almost 9 o'clock. So we captured the school peak, people drop it off, but there's also people going to work during that. So that's why it spikes so high during the morning peak hour, and in the evening peak hour, even though you have a fight, it's not accident as much as it is in the morning because it doesn't coincide with the school. And on Warren, it's...
But, okay, so the, the highest point for that, the little point there at the top, that's the school.
That's the school.
And that's in the morning.
And the morning peak hour. You've got commuter route and the school. That's 170 points. You can see that in the afternoon, you do have a little bit of a bump around 2 to 3 o'clock, so there are people that are leaving the school at that time, too. But it does, that's not, that, that doesn't be combined with the community hours, so that's why it didn't reach a higher level.
So what you're saying to me is that the peak hour on Oak Colony at Warren is split in the afternoon between the school traffic and the community.
Yes, school, yes, and then the community comes in later.
But in the morning.
It coincides.
It goes together.
Yes.
Commuters in the...
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And you can see on, on Warren, even though it's at a different scale, you can see the scale down to peak hour in the morning, and then it's, it's a hump in the evening peak hour, it's, you know, it's not the same volume, but it, it is around the B. So we did capture that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I just wanted to address a couple of things. Sean Carpenter, Shamrock Development, development consultant on the project. I also live at 152 Oxon Bridge Road in Wallaston. Couple of things that during the comprehensive permit, this, this has to be approved by Mass Housing as a project eligibility. It went through that process as a 40-unit project. One of the questions that came up at the last hearing was, if we were to reduce this, through our conversations with, with folks, we thought that this was the beneficial plan to reduce down to 32 units for both traffic and parking and all other reasons. We will reduce the amount of affordable, required affordable units from 10 to sit, to eight, but those eight will be at 80%. And the, the owners have also offered the balance of the units at the workforce housing levels up to 120%, also restricted to 10% below market. Any changes to a project reducing the number does not need to go back to Mass Housing for project determination or project eligibility, as these projects are typically reduced at the zoning board process. As far as, just in response to some comments at the last hearing about deep subsidy programs, the rents that are here that, that are proposed, and, you know, are, are subject to change, are above that of any deep subsidy programs that may exist in the, in the current federal environment. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody want to like to speak in favor? First off, I can call. Third, Hope Coles, you have more to respond? Any opposed on the side?
One in favor.
Huh? Want to step forward?
Hi.
Name and address?
My name's Don Murphy. I live at 33 Newton Ave.
You have the floor.
Oh, great, thank you. And I've lived there for 15 years, and Quincy has become a second home for me. I grew up on, on, in southeastern Mass and West Bridgewater, and came to Quincy by way of Dorchester and then Hausneck, and, and finally to Wallaston a little bit more than 15 years ago. I've made it part, I've made it really a home for myself. I've worked at the South Shore Y MCA for the last 15 years in a part-time capacity, where I've always donated to the programs and support our community, last year being the first year that I donated in excess of 100% of my wages from the line. I've heard a good deal about this project that's going on, and I think it would be very good for Quincy, and that I see this as something that would be adding to our tax base with very low usage. I'm in a building myself where there are four units, and they're all single bedroom. We have four people in there, and they're not sending people to the schools and are generating a lot of expenses that way. They are spending money at the restaurants and so forth. So I see this, I see a good similarity in that way. As far as the Wallaston neighborhood, I do see it as an opportunity to significantly upgrade and update the housing in that, in that particular area, which is right around the corner for me. It's about 600 feet. So I, I see something like this, and I see it fitting in very well with some of the other things that we see going on around Quincy, where we see things being upgraded and improved. And that's all I ask.
Thank you. Thanks. Last call. I ask for, ah, four emails in favor. Kenneth Mu. There's a 50 Newton Ave. This is John Mullin, 6 Brendell.
There's a fifty Newton Ave. This is John Mullin, Six Brendale Road. Eric Simone. Sixty-five Warren Ave. Olu Shiani, Otto. Thirty-four Heat Street. Anyone opposed or on the side?
Yes.
And realize, we heard all your comments, so just make it brief. So we already have the transcript from last meeting, so if you want to add to it or just get up and say you're opposing, your name, that's fine too. But if we could have a line here, so it looks like a lot of people want to speak. We don't want to be waiting for people to stand in line. So if you're next, please come out. Name and address, please.
Name's Dr. William Hart from the drug above it, all three of these properties. I'm not gonna get long into it. It's ridiculous. If it goes through, I'm just gonna fight and call like I did the last time. A week after the last meeting, a U-Haul is coming out of Warren Ave, one of the many cars that's now an expressway. Since they paved O'Colony Ave, it's a cop to avoid the light of Papa Gino's. His traffic study, first of all, the traffic study, he said he put strips down the northern streets. I got on Standish, I take a right in Warren, I take a left on O'Colony Ave, go down my driveway, I go that way back and forth to work. There was one of those highway strips put right in front of that building for about six hours. There was no strip on O'Colony, there was no strip on Standish. So it's a Dr. Seuss because, because it's silliness. The same week the accident with the U-Haul, all those people went to the hospital, you can call the police department on that one. There was a sewer main collapse about eighty feet down from where they're tying the sewer in for this building. They had a major sewer main collapse and had to have a contractor come down from Danvus. They had sump pump truck pumping the sewers out for four days because the sewers were backing up in the people's basement, so you can call the city on that one. They had to have a company out of Danvus, the sewer's nineteen feet deep, it's over a hundred years old, and, and there was only one company in Massachusetts, eastern Mass that could handle the job and had to come and do it. It took four days for them to do it. And they're gonna tie in about eighty feet upstream from this, from this. The, the parking, you know, the parking thing, that when you guys voted for this the last time and voted yes on it, three minutes before you guys voted yes for this, their own lawyer stood here and said that this parking is so tight in this property that the cars are gonna have a hard time getting in and out of the parking garage and the, and the garbage guys are gonna have a hard time picking up the dumpsters. You said it was a horrible idea, it shouldn't go through, and then you just all cut them off and ignored them and two minutes later voted yes, including you, when not even a minute and a half earlier, you said that it, it, you couldn't do it, it's not right for the neighborhood and you voted yes. I, I don't get it. I really don't get it. The, the parking, so now, before you had, if, if you tore down these three little buildings and just paved and made a parking lot, you wouldn't get forty cars in there. Forty little smart cars wouldn't get in there. So how are you gonna build this thing and get forty cars in there beyond me? I'd like to see it. I, I don't get, I'd love to see the measurements and where they're getting these measurements to these, to these properties. There's two poor families there and there's a little tiny commercial building next to it and Warren Ave is already parked from all these buildings. And there's eight, eight rental units there. Now you're gonna go thirty-two units. And these people on Newton Ave, I don't even think these people live in Newton Ave. They probably rent these houses out. They probably own these houses and I've never even seen them before. If you live on Newton Ave and you think this is a good idea, you're never gonna be able to park in your street again. This whole neighborhood is gonna be parked cars, Standish Ave, Newton Ave, the whole neighborhood's gonna be congested from this. It's just, it's absurd. The accident, you know, the traffic study, take the slowest point of the day in that traffic study, take the slowest hour that that engineer tells you and go sit in O'Colony Ave and tell me that street's not an expressway now since they paved it. Everyone is dodging off of Newport Ave to go over, cut around to avoid that light of Papa Gino's. All day and all night, there's cars flying up and down that street. The cars doing fifty, sixty miles an hour down that street now since this, and if you don't blame me, go sit there for an hour and watch it because I, I live with it. I come out of my driveway and I say, coming out of my driveway's hot enough and it might come out of Warren Ave, I live right next to this. You know, the sewer, I'm not gonna keep getting into it because it's, it just makes my blood boil, but let somebody else talk about it.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Stephanie Yocche and I live at seventy-six Standish Ave. My husband and I moved to the house just over a year ago. We moved from the Back Bay.
Can you just speak louder?
Oh, yes. We moved from the Back Bay. We thought it would be a lovely quaint neighborhood to ideally raise a family in eventually. We love our house. It's cozy in the winter, it's cozy in the summer. We love it. It's great. I will say, when we first moved in, we were talking with our neighbors out on the sidewalk and we noticed cars just blowing right through the Standish Ave stop sign and jokingly they said, oh, that stop sign, that's optional. And we have kind of discovered over the last year that it wasn't really a joke. You know, that cars, whether they're late for work or in a rush to get home, they really view it as optional. They know that the traffic coming out of Warren Ave also has the stop sign, so they just feel free to blow right through. There's often police out in the morning and the evening and they only have to be there about five minutes at most to catch somebody. So we appreciate that they're always out there, they're doing a great job, but people view it as optional, as my husband, Boris. So my concern, although it is very much with the skyscape, you know, skyscape of the neighborhood and the, the people that we brought into the neighborhood because of this rent-controlled one-bedroom apartment, our main concern is with the safety of the increased parking. It's already very, very difficult to cross at the crosswalk. You know, you don't know if people are gonna stop honestly, so you have to wait for them to acknowledge that you're standing there and that you'd like to cross. It's also difficult to see when there are cars parked, so they can't see you. Sometimes you can't really see them. So we are very, very worried about what the increased parked cars on Standish Ave and the surrounding triangle around the park will do to not only pedestrian safety, but pulling out, as other people have said, pulling out of our driveway is already very difficult again because you can't see very well and there's a fifty percent chance that your car is not gonna stop at their stop signs letting you out. So that is our main concern with the project and we're hoping that if you reconsider the scale of the project and the parking spaces, apartment ratio, that that will at least cut down on some of these dangers.
Yeah, the only other, and my name is Boris Yocche, I'm Stephanie's husband. The only other thing that I wanted to add to Stephanie's testimony is we see fire trucks on Standish Avenue. And when I'm home, I kind of see one every hour, once, every two hours. The street is not wide enough as it is. They literally zoom right down Standish Avenue.
As they have to, to get their emergency.
As they have to. I'm concerned that if we have a string of cars parked on both sides of the street, that becomes much more difficult. Also for the stop sign, I think it's probably easy to check with the police department, the Quincy Police Department. Every time we see the police cruiser parked on Warren Ave, they usually park on Warren Ave spotting for people who take, stop or don't stop on that optional stop sign, they sit for no longer than thirty seconds before they pull somebody over.
Right.
It takes literally thirty seconds every time they park there. We, we actually watch it's a game.
It's a game.
We, we play who, who will be more accurate in, in guessing how quickly somebody will be pulled, pulled over.
I bet thirty seconds, he bets a minute and thirty seconds, but I usually win.
And she usually wins.
So, um, but yeah.
So that's probably something easy to check, how many pull overs when the Quincy Police Department does on Standish Avenue on, on top of that stop sign.
But my husband makes a good point that the emergency vehicles, they fly down the road as they need to. We're not complaining about the speed or anything like that, but they won't be able to go down the road safely at such a speed if there are cars parked on either side of the road. So then not only does that create more of a danger for possible pedestrians, but it also creates a danger for the person that they are trying to get to is basically the point.
We hear what you're saying.
Yeah. So thank you very much for your time.
Would you write a letter? We actually wrote this, so if you wanted to bring it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christine Moldman, eighty Standish Avenue. Reiterating on the, I believe there's a traffic study being done by the city. I don't know what the process of that is, but I think the last meeting had been requested. That's young, the young man associates, very vague traffic setting would be fantastic. I live at eighty Standish, right on the facing Warren. So I see it, I have a wonderful porch. I watch the cars go by all day long. You know why? Because I have a home office. I literally hear everything go by all day long. I assure you those numbers are very low. Throwing it out there. There's no scale, architectural scale to any of, any of the buildings in the neighborhood. When you do an architectural rendering of a neighborhood, you should have it scaled to what is in that area. This is just a lone building. My brothers are architects. You should show how the whole community is impacted and all the buildings around it are no higher than three stories. So I get that they've scaled it down, but the houses next to it are like microcosms compared to that building. Throwing it out there, no accommodations for visitor parking at all in their parking that they have. So if ten percent of the people or twenty percent of the people constantly have people visiting, they're in my neighborhood in front of my house constantly being parked there. So there's no accommodations for visitors at all. The imminent emergency vehicles are a problem. I did a study and looked into all the other buildings in and around the area, other apartment buildings. They're not at full capacity. There's a hu, there's no demand for one bedrooms and studios in Quincy. There's plenty of accommodation and occupancy. So I'm wondering why this has to go up right in our neighborhood. They're building four-hundred-and-ninety-two units on Crown Colony for next fall, at the same time this one would be up. I'm just wondering why we need to slam this into our neighborhood. There's plenty of places at Triple Nine, there's fifty-seven units, ninety parking spaces there, and there's four-hundred-and-ninety-two units of Crown Colony. There's plenty of places for people to live in Quincy and facts in building has plenty of occupancy as well. And I'm just wondering, they threw in a nice little community room as well. That's nice, but in Quincy, all the other buildings have yoga studios, they have washer dryers in unit, which these guys don't, they have twenty-four hour maintenance, they have private storage, they have bike racks, they have all these accommodations that people are looking for nowadays in buildings. This has a cute little community room and that's it. They are just slamming all these units into this big building and they're not really accommodating for what is the demand in the market right now. And people for at that price point are looking for more than just a little community room. They're looking for more. They're gonna pay fifteen hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom. They want a washer dryer, they want yoga class, they want, you know, they want all those pieces, parts. So if you're at that point, a pool, they need all of that. Crown Colony's offering all of those amenities. Triple Nine has a bunch of things and security built into the building. I'm assuming this has no security to it. So I'm just throwing it out there. I did my research. I'm not a big fan of, of all the, eight out of thirty-two being affordable housing. I'm concerned about that and having a lot of high turnover with our, with people in the, in the building. This is not a high turnover neighborhood. We've all been here for many, many years. I've been here for eleven years, so that's my concerns. Throwing it out there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I stay from one to fifty-five Warren Ave. I'll be directly across from this, so hopefully it won't be directly across from this. You all know how I feel about it. I support every single person that's been up here and everything they've had to say is so true. I noticed, I was there when the accident happened. I went into the police office and I spoke to him and also the person who was involved with this accident was taken out of their property, the little brick building they own in the corner of Warren Ave, O'Colony, the day before, twenty-five hours before he was taken out of there. Police were there, ambulance was there and they took him to the hospital twenty-five hours before this happened and he was the driver of one of these vehicles twenty-four hours later. And I mentioned to the policeman, I said, this man was taken to hospital yesterday. I don't know why. He said, I know about yesterday, I was here then. And he said, the passenger of one of the vehicles is going to the hospital and he is also going to the hospital as well. What that means, you'd have to ask the officer. Warren Ave is a very small street. Now, that's my biggest concern. It's a little street as I told you. Go, go by it. It's a little street, little homes, very quaint, very street. But the cars, and I don't know, when they mentioned that O'Colony, since it's been paved, that now people are going down there and then taking a left to St. Anne's. I think they're also taking a left on Warren Ave because the traffic in Warren Ave in the last couple of years has been during the day, very much amplified. There's a whole lot more traffic than there was before and they're going fast and I don't know why. It's just a little street, why anyone would go fast, but they're really speeding down. And there's a stop sign, as I said. There's two stop signs, one at Standish, one at, one Ave. Why are they going so fast on one Ave? But they are. They're really picking up a lot of speed and those are some additional concerns I have on top of all the others that we've gone over so many times in the last two and a half years. So that's basically what I want to say and also the fact that, you know, front of my house, all the sewer problems that were going on, O'Colony, Warren Ave right in front of my house as well, you can check with the DPW and find out however that was and what the problem was and the remedy. And if it was already caused now without all of this, what then? And these are legitimate raisins, reasons and excuses for bringing up all the meetings, the parking, the traffic and the sewage. Now there's an accident between that meeting and this meeting and now there's problems with the sewage. So rest of my case and...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mom, we gotta, if people gotta speak, let's go. We've got a long meeting tonight. There's people here that want their, their students to do it, not at midnight.
Good evening, and this is a zoning report. My name's Julie Lester. I have a few questions that I would like to ask through you, Mr. Chairman, to the traffic engineer, Mr. Villan. I understand that you sent in a copy of the traffic study, which I...
If you could give me the questions, that would be great.
Okay. The first question I have with you guys is this, traffic studies are revised, probably was that done a month, did you say a month ago? Is that a month ago?
No, it's a month ago.
A month ago, okay. And, um... That report is available for viewing.
Yeah, we have one down in the office.
There is, okay. Is it possible for the Neighborhood Association to get a copy of this to review? That would be wonderful. I have a couple of letters from two people who could not make it tonight, but I took a bunch of them into the record. I don't know, do you have?
If you, if you have a bunch of emails there, I can read them at the end and name.
Okay, well, I have, I have one letter and my own.
I already have one here.
I'm not sure if it's the same one. Dr. Kulew's letter?
Yeah.
Do you have that one?
Yeah.
So this is a letter from Kenny and Patricky. I would like that read into the record. And, um, let's see. Okay. With regard to the traffic study, continuing with those questions, I, I, I was able to take a brief look at that today and the first thing I, I saw was that the study area of crashes that were used were from the Department of Transportation and those are using the years two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and two thousand and twelve. And the comment below it says that this crash average of one point of crashes per year is not considered unusually high or uniquely hazardous. And I thought to myself, was Central Middle School even open in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and twelve? And it was not. It didn't open until two thousand and thirteen. So I have an article from a ledger that showed that, from the enterprise, which showed the opening date of central. So I don't think that that crash study data is relevant to today's conditions. The other thing that I looked at were the dates that the timing of the studies were done and the data that I looked at, it showed June dates, the twenty-third, fourth, and fifth, and those are the dates of the last week of school. And anyone that knows people from Central Middle School, the entire seventh grade is off at Camp Wing. So a third of the school population isn't even on campus when they're doing the study. Although I didn't see anything in the reports I was looking at or any revised study from a month ago, so I qualify that statement. But the numbers that I looked at, traffic study that was done in two thousand and fifteen in June on those three dates, June twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-four, those would be days that lived in the last week of school when a third of the students are at Camp Wing, another third of the students are up on Pageant Field doing field day. So maybe you only have two hundred students there at the school. So I, you know, questioned the validity of the numbers on those dates. So I'm gonna submit these three items here for your review at the end. Also with regard to the question about whether we need more housing, there is currently thirty-seven, almost thirty-seven hundred units in development in the city and we're just one project. So there's plenty of housing being developed in the city today. I will provide you with a copy of that map that I have with all the development projects, which you probably already have. which you probably already have. And then, too many papers here. Lastly, I'd like to read my statement into the record. Good evening. My name is Joy Lester and I reside at 44 Newton Ave with my husband James Boyd and our three daughters, Amanda, Elizabeth, and Emily, where we have lived for more than 30 years. We are all opposed to the Warren Ave development of a 40-unit apartment building on a site that presently consists of two multifamily homes, which has four families each for a total of eight families, and a postage-stamped parcel of land that is zoned industrially. We ask that you vote no on the applicant's request for a comprehensive permit for the reasons that I will elaborate upon below. The proposed plan of 40 units creates a colossal neighborhood nightmare in the heart of the Old Colony neighborhood, a densely populated area that has a single-family homes, multifamily homes, and a few modest two-story apartment buildings, a motel. The Eastern Nazarene College's expanded campus along with its daycare center, campus Kinder House. Not to mention the new Central Middle School with over 600 students. And the commensurate traffic that all of these entities generate, we understand that the school fills community need, as does the college campus, the motel, and the daycare center. All of these buildings are in the two-story range. They have by all apparent measures sufficient parking. Our streets are already clogged with cars. Our neighborhood already experiences significant delays due to the increased traffic created by these recent developments. Vehicles entering either Beale Street or Hancock Street of Old Colony and Standish Avenues respectively can experience wake times of between 10 and 20 minutes daily at peak traffic times. And while these time delays may seem insignificant to some, try explaining this to the family of the person who could not get proper medical treatment in time to avert a catastrophic outcome or in the worst-case scenario, the loss of life. The absurdity of placing a 40-unit apartment building with insufficient parking in the heart of our neighborhood where it will topple over the surrounding homes is misplaced, casting a permanent shadow on the homeowners across the street. Those homeowners will never have the sunshine upon their property ever again. This proposal is better suited to being placed in the center of downtown Wallaston. As it stands, the proposal is driven, in my opinion, purely by greed and it places the self-interest of the developers above the safety and well-being of the community that has been established for decades. Make no mistake, this proposal creates a safety issue of monumental proportions. The hearing of the zoning board held on February 23, 2017 for the case 16064 regarding the premises number 48 McNavale Avenue, Quincy, has already established the precedence for our neighborhood in its unanimous decision, in its denial of adding more units. The reason for the denial should set the precedent for future development in our neighborhood. I urge you to vote no on this proposal this evening. Obviously, it's been continued. But we are collecting a petition of signatures in opposition to the project. And I will continue collecting signatures and bring that forward at the next meeting in two weeks.
This meeting will be closed tonight and there will be nothing added.
What do you mean?
Just what I said. Tonight's our here. You get to speak. And then it's closed and it's deliberations.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification. And I'll be back to you tonight then.
That's great.
Okay. And I do have a couple of other comments or rebuttals.
I'm going to give everyone two minutes after this. We have five other cases here we have to do tonight. People have to go to work tomorrow.
The most important thing I want to leave it before tonight is this. And that is, you know, I referenced this map of 3,700 units being developed across the city for a reason. And that is this. If the rest of these development projects have to abide by the city zoning ordinances, one and a half parking spaces per unit. You know, why the develop, you know, why, you know, these developers are requesting exceptional relief from the zoning ordinances with regard to parking and setbacks and things like that. And they need to meet that one and a half parking space minimum. And they have to meet the additional requirements for visitor parking. Because I've experienced problems with parking on my street, as you all know, because I've testified for a year about the parking problems on Newton Ave. And you guys know this, and I'm not going to get into that and repeat all of that. But, you know, they're requesting exceptional relief. And the rest of the city has to follow the zoning ordinances. And my question is, a comment is that they should be required to follow the same. Thank you very much for your time. That's all I have to say.
Anyone's got to speak. We've got two minutes. Two minutes. We only have another 10 people. We have people that have to go to work tomorrow and they have to be heard tonight. There's a court.
My name is Stuart Tryer. I'm an attorney from Boston. I do live in Quincy. I represent several of the neighbors in the area. One of the things that would be very unfair is closing this meeting tonight. The reason it's unfair is because we haven't seen the plans either. So comments that we make tonight are based on old plans. When we get to see the plans, we may have different comments. So I have to guess at what those plans are to tell you what I think about this project. Now, the first thing I think about the project is there was a statement by Attorney Bailey, who I know wasn't there the last time this was approved, two years ago. He said that they didn't face the opposition that they're facing this time. That's really not accurate. Although I know he wasn't there, so it's not purposeful. If you recall, there was a petition with roughly 88 signatures from immediate neighbors on Newton and Warren and Old Colony opposed. So a petition, instead of coming here and speaking, if a petition with 88 signatures isn't serious opposition from a neighborhood, I don't know what is. So the neighbors were opposed to it then. This board chose to approve it over the neighbor's, you know, position on it. So based on not seeing the plans, I do applaud the developer for coming down from the previous number of units, the 32. That's great. But what doesn't this change? It doesn't change the groundwater problem that we have in the neighborhood. All right? We have groundwater recharge problems. We have runoff problems. If you look at the size of this project, how much open space are you providing? If you're going to build a 40B, a 40B should be a nice project for people to live in that provides low-income housing for people that is very decent. Many 40B projects are developed on an old farm. They provide transportation. They have green space.[1722.18]